Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Now we'll have a silent prayer and the flag salute from Cub Pack 84. First of all, have a moment of silence, please. And this will be my last time saying something about prayer. Please remember everyone that's blessed, fortunate in us during this holiday season. Try to find in your hearts to reach out to them. And also please remember all of our servicemen and women who will not be able to make it home for the holidays. Colored parochial colors.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to the soul of the good and righteous.
Councilmembers Singleton, Payne, Campion.
Present.
Cruz.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Okay, agenda approval additions and/or deletions, council.
Yes, I'd like to move item J6. Is it B6?
J6.
J6. To after consent, if that's okay. I know we have some speakers in the audience.
I'm sorry, say J what?
Six. J6.
Okay. And I'd like to pull H1, the minute, to come back at the next meeting. Okay. So where will we put the those things? Should we put that after? Okay. Okay, we have no presentations, so Liz, would you please read the public comments?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
Okay. Al Bogdan.
Good evening, Al Bogdan. A very concerned citizen of golf. I like to keep you guys on your toes. And so I'm here to prod sometimes, but there's been something that's been going on for a while. And I guess it was three years ago, maybe now, maybe four. I'd like you to consider, since we have changes all over, that we could go back instead of the three minutes to the five minutes. I didn't pay them either. But if we could, I've had a lot of comments around town. They said, "Well, why don't you say something?" I said, "I said it before," but, you know. And so now, maybe with some changes, if you just consider it to go back to the five, what happens? Maybe you don't realize that when you make a decision here, it ripples down partisan rec. It goes to all the different committees sometimes. They'll all adapt to three minutes. And you can control it much better with the five minutes because people feel like you don't want to hear them. And they're very scared about getting up here for three minutes. They can't get it out. They write, read it, and it goes four or five minutes sometimes, or four minutes. So they hesitate in explaining what they want to say correctly or the way they want to say it. And so what I'd suggest is, is if you could just discuss it, the five-minute rule is fine. If you have a group, like 20 people, you know you got how many people. You could also say, "Well, we're going to limit this to two minutes apiece or three, if you'd like." And then you can change it. You can go down. The challenge is, you never go up unless someone says, "Okay, you can go another two minutes or three minutes." And then you give it to them, you got to give it to everyone else. So it's just something I just would like to have you consider. People in golf have made a lot of comments over the year, two years. Now that we've got a change going, maybe this would be a new change, a new time to look at it a little clearer and have a little discussion about it. I'd appreciate it if you would. So thank you very much. That's all I have. Now wishing you a Merry Christmas. I may not see you next time. And again, I might be here before I leave, but I want you to have a very safe and happy Christmas. And, oh, it's good to see new blood sometimes up there, new ideas and everything else. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al. Okay, so now we're going to do the oaths of office. Oh, statement of fact, I'm sorry.
Before we move on to that, I'd like to respond to that because I think it's important. I think maybe we should put it on for discussion at a future council meeting. I think that'd be the best way to discuss it. Council agrees with that?
Yeah, do we bring that on at the end of the meeting usually?
Well, I was going to, just so, Al, in case Al leaves early, so he's aware of it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Liz, it's you. The statement of fact.
Okay, before you, in a hard copy, is a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election that was held on November 4th, 2014, declaring the results from three city council seats and Measure C. It is recommended tonight that council adopt the resolution. And let me just add that at the November 4th election, Laura Huer, Mary Lou Powers, and Mark Cruz were elected to a four-year term, and Measure C failed. So at this time, I asked for adoption of the resolution.
So, Liz.
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Councilmembers Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Are you unanimous? One absent.
Okay. Okay, now, the recess is going down here. You got that in the wrong place, correct? No, we're going to keep it that way. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I thought you were saying that.
Alrighty.
We need to recess before we take the oath.
We're going to recess before we take the oath? All right. Okay, I guess we're going to recess.
Yeah.
And that was my ear. Okay, and what are we doing? (inaudible) Oh, I see. You can't say that. Okay, I get you. Yes. Yes, we're done.
Right. Let's come back.
I understand lots of the signs, but the camera's going to be big on. Okay.
Just want to drop the glasses.
So, baser I am. I repeat, I'm going to, I'm going to be holding my gun. I want to show you the camera. I say your name.
I am Mary Lou.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
That I am an elected official.
That I am an elected official.
Of the City of golf.
Of the City of golf.
I will faithfully discharge the duty.
I will faithfully discharge the duty.
As the officer of the State of California.
The officer of the Senate of the Member.
Reporting to the dust of my boat.
Reporting to the dust of my boat.
Your right. Thank you. I'm going to reconvene back to the city council. Okay. Now we'll have a new roll call. Oh, yes.
We'll have a new roll.
Roll call, please, Liz. Councilmembers Huer.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Campion.
Here.
Cruz.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Okay, now we're going to have the election of our new mayor.
Madam Mayor, before we go to the election, I just wanted to review some of the rules for this process, since we haven't done it for a couple of years. First of all, this process is done by way of nomination. And in nominations, any member can make a nomination. A person can nominate him or herself. There's no need for a second for nominations. A member, if they are nominated and they do not want to serve, they can decline the nomination. And a motion to close nominations is not necessary. So after all members that desire to make a nomination have had the opportunity, then the clerk would just close the nominations for the office of mayor. And then the votes would proceed in the order of the nominations made until one person receives a majority vote. Are there any questions on the process?
No. Liz, go ahead and proceed, please.
Okay. I hereby open the nomination period for the office of mayor.
I nominate Mark Cruz. Do I second?
No second necessary.
Oh, okay, sorry. That makes it good.
Move for closing. Move to close nominations.
Okay.
Do I have a second for closing?
Oh, second to close, okay.
Nominations are closed.
Okay, so there was a motion on the floor to close, which would require a vote.
So call for the vote. Council, let's start again. Councilmembers Payne.
Aye.
Huer.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Campion.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark.
All right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The vote was on the motion to close nominations. Now we need to take a vote on the nomination of the mayor.
Yeah, you can tell we don't do this very often. Oh, well.
Okay, so we will vote. The motion on the floor is to elect Councilmember Cruz as mayor.
Discussion, please.
Discussion.
I don't know if the community's aware, but the mayor, a few years back, has changed to a two-year term. I would like us to bring back the issue of looking at it being a one-year term. The mayor position is largely a ceremonial position. Members of the community are often very confused about the mayor position. I've had people ask me if it's the highest vote getter that becomes mayor. Is it the senior person on the council that becomes mayor? So I think since it is a largely ceremonial position, that we should really look at changing it to a one-year term and serving at the pleasure of the council. And the council then can look at whether they want to elect a second year or whether or not they think there should be a change. I think all council members that are elected should have that opportunity to serve as mayor, since it is a ceremonial position. Mayor has no more responsibilities or obligations or power than the rest of the council. And I think the community needs to be aware of that. And I think that because it is ceremonial, that we need an opportunity for more people to be involved in the process. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. I would say that, having served as mayor, that to really be able to communicate with the public, that you need to be there for two years, and people need to know who you are. And you can say it's ceremonial, and yes, it's true, you only get one vote. But I can tell you, it's more time-consuming, there are more responsibilities. The community looks to you to be a leader. I think to really understand the position and to do the best job, that you really need those two years. And secondly, I would not say that I would want to even consider changing it at this time.
I would like to add to that, too, having been a mayor also. I get just the opposite. I have people always saying to me, "Well, who is the mayor? Because you seem to be changing it all the time." And I get kind of confused. There are, it isn't just ceremonial, as Barbara said. The mayor gets invited to a lot of things out of the city to represent the city. And so I'm, I think that two years is the way it should be also.
I've also served as a mayor, not in this city, in other cities. And I can see both sides. But I feel, I think, a little bit more strongly on the side that, you know, it is pretty much ceremonial. And it's an opportunity for those people that are elected to this office to have the opportunity to serve as mayor. I mean, I've talked with Mary Lou, and I know you've really enjoyed your two-year stint as mayor, and it's been a lot of fun, and it's a lot of hard work. But I believe that any one of us or any future council member would be able to grasp what is necessary within that one-year period and perform the functions very adequately. So I believe that, you know, it's served the city since 1946 up until several years ago, and under the one-year term rule. And I just, I'm having a hard time understanding the necessity of making that change.
I really think that all boards and councils should reorganize every year. School boards do, other city councils do. Most city councils serve a one-year term. And they, if it's not an elected position, they do reorganize every year. And I think that we need to look at reorganizing every year. I think we talked about how many, I don't think everybody just does a year. Do we have any numbers on that?
Mayor, just as a point of order, I'd like to remind the council that the action that we're on is the election of the mayor. This is not an item to change the council guidelines. My recommendation would be that if council desires to continue the debate of this item, we place an item on the next agenda to consider any amendments to the council guidelines that the council desire.
Or else it stays as it is?
It would stay as it is, if it is. Yeah. It's not an agenda item, an action that can be taken on, so.
That's correct. But the council can change the rules at any time. So if a member desires to have this item looked at in closer detail, we certainly can place it on a future agenda for consideration.
This is my original request. Let's just look at this. Okay, there you have it. Okay, let's have the vote for Mark, please. Okay.
We had a motion, did we have a second?
Yeah. Actually, we have a nomination on the floor.
Not required. You said it's not required.
So where we are in process is we have a nomination on the floor for Councilmember Cruz to be mayor. And so the city clerk should call the roll to elect Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, Councilmembers Payne.
Aye.
Huer.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Campion.
Aye.
Okay, now, congratulations. [applause]
Bear with me here. I now open nominations for the election of Vice Mayor.
I nominate Kurt Campion.
I nominate Barbara Payne.
There are any further nominations? Nominations are closed.
Okay, we'll take them in the order they were received. Which the first nomination is for Councilmember Campion for Vice Mayor. And just going to go and start at the end. Councilmembers Payne.
No.
Huer.
Yes.
Powers.
No.
Cruz.
No.
Campion.
Yes.
Okay, next. The nomination is for Councilmember Payne as Vice Mayor. Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Huer.
No.
Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz, I'm sorry. Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Pass for the one.
Thank you, Barbara. Now, did we want to jump straight into the, you get consent, or did you want to break? What's the plan here?
I thought you were going to reset the recess this morning.
We're going to recess.
Okay, then we'll recess for 15 minutes?
Do we need to change what we're hearing? Or not?
There.
Okay. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1174.22]
Nominate Barbara Payne.
Do we have any further nominations? Nominations are closed.
Okay, we'll take them in the order they were received. Which, the first nomination is for Councilwoman, Councilwoman Campion for Vice Mayor. And just gonna start at the end. Councilmember Payne?
No.
Hewer?
Yes.
Powers?
No.
Cruz?
No.
Campion?
Yes.
Okay, next. The nomination is for Councilwoman Payne as Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Payne?
Aye. Can I say a aye?
Councilwoman Hewer?
No.
Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz, I'm sorry. Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, pass the four to one.
Thank you Barbara. Now, did we want to jump straight into the consent, or did you want to break? What's the plan here?
I thought you were gonna reset the recess this morning. We're gonna reset.
Okay, then we'll recess for fifteen minutes? It's not clear. Okay. Next item will be consent. Have a motion? Comments?
You wanna read them first? It's up to you. Can you hear? Oh. Yeah. You want me to read them?
Yell at it. Please.
Okay, we have three items on consent. The first one was polls, which were the minutes. The second one, approval of the City of Belt Warrens. The third one, the architectural review procedure.
Do you have a motion?
Some approve. Second?
Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hewer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
As for the regular calendar, we're moving J six forward. And that is Mr. Winkler. Item is consideration of options for upgrades for Littleton Community Center stoves. All right, we are working on a PowerPoint. As we're working on that. There we go. Mayor and council members. This item is to provide you with a report on options available for upgrading the Littleton Community Center stoves and to seek council direction on a preferred alternative. Away with background, the current electric stoves are pictured on this slide, and they are believed to be the original stoves that were installed when the Littleton Center was constructed in the late seventies, which would make the units approximately thirty-five years old. During the 2014 budget hearings, concerns were expressed with the condition of the existing stoves, and ultimately nineteen thousand five hundred dollars was approved for the purchase of replacement units. Upon subsequent consultation with the Community Development Department and Consumer Fire, it was determined that to replace the stoves would trigger a requirement to bring the Littleton kitchen up to current code standards as a commercial kitchen. Specifically, some of the challenges that we face would be to, we would need to upgrade the fire suppression and ventilation systems for the kitchen, along with related electrical system upgrades to meet current code requirements. As you can see in the photo on this slide, there are no fire suppression nozzles on the hood over the stoves, as you might see in a more modern hood arrangement. And if an option was to be considered for changing out the electric ranges for gas-fired units, we would also need to upgrade both the service to the building and add internal gas piping within the kitchen. Given the significant cost increases associated with either replacement option, staff then proceeded to request a professional assessment of the condition of the existing ranges utilizing commercial appliance service out of Sacramento. After thorough inspection, they have indicated that the units actually are in surprisingly good condition considering their age, and that needed repairs and calibration of the ovens could be accomplished for approximately twelve hundred dollars. It is noted that refurbishment would not improve the appearance or the basic functionality of the stoves, but would correct a door hinge problem that we're aware of, a malfunctioning thermostat that has been affecting some of the operation of one of the stoves, and calibration of all oven controls would be included in that price. So, we've sort of boiled down a large variety of options to three basic options for you to consider tonight. First option would be to refurbish the existing electric stoves, which would not trigger any code upgrade requirements of basically maintaining the existing equipment. And this slide does show all three options, the estimated cost to implement those options, and supplemental funding that would be needed for two of the options. As noted, nineteen thousand five hundred is in the current approved budget. Should options two or three be selected, it will be necessary for staff to bring back formal approval of a supplemental funding request for subsequent council consideration. And for the public that can't necessarily see the slides, the three options are to refurbish the existing stoves for twelve hundred dollars, replace the existing stoves with new electric units for a cost of approximately forty-nine thousand dollars, or to replace the existing stoves with new gas-fired units at a cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars. So, to assist council in making an informed decision, we also reviewed the kitchen usage. We looked back over the last three years with statistics furnished by the Parks and Recreation Department, and looking primarily at food preparation events at Littleton Center. We came up with the statistics shown on this chart. They basically break down into two categories, paid use and free use, and the free use are shown in the light blue in the second and third columns, and two categories of paid usage in the darker blue in columns four and five. It is noted that city records do not indicate whether private rentals utilize the kitchen for cooking purposes or not. They have use of the kitchen if they choose, but we don't have any record keeping as to whether they actually used it. So, that's the fifth column is private use unknown. We don't know if the kitchen was actually used or not, but that's the statistics over the last three years. The takeaway from this chart, to summarize, is that depending on how you count the private party utilization, the Littleton kitchen is used for cooking on average two to three times per month over the last three years, and a large percentage of these events do not generate any current fee revenue for the city, based on our current fee structure. Which brings us to our recommendation tonight. Based upon current kitchen utilization statistics, in an effort to live within the approved budget, our staff recommendation is to refurbish the existing stoves at a cost of approximately twelve hundred dollars. Should this prove to be, to provide an unsatisfactory outcome, replacement of the stoves could be reconsidered during the future budget approval process at the desire of the council. If council direction tonight, we are seeking council direction on your preferred alternative among the three, or any variation that you'd like to give direction on. And should you proceed with stove replacement, which would be options two or three, we would then bring back a budget adjustment at the next council meeting commensurate with whichever option you select. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Questions for council?
On the vent system or the hood? So, there'd be no repairs to that currently on the fire suppression system, excuse me?
The twelve hundred dollars would basically refurbish the stoves, and no code upgrades would be triggered or required at this time. So, we would not be proposing any if we refurbished the existing. If we go with either option two or three, code would require the city to upgrade the hood, fire suppression, ventilation, and electrical system.
What type of system is it currently, then?
The hood system?
Yeah.
Well, there is no fresh air intake. It just pulls air out of the rest of the building. So, in a future scenario, we'd have to actually put an air intake in the kitchen, and we'd recommend at a minimum a swamp cooler type setup so we're not in the summer pulling in hundred-degree outside air. The hood itself that exists has an archaic fire suppression system up inside the hood, but there is no cutoff. When you hit the fire switches, it doesn't shut the ranges down, which a current system would have to do for either electric or gas.
But, on the fire suppression system, is it water? Is it gas?
It's basically a water-based solution that is up inside the hood, and doesn't even come close to meeting current standards for fire suppression.
And I think that's one of my major concerns, is that we have a system that doesn't meet current standards, and for safety reasons, I think alone, that system should be looked at for replacement purposes. And I think that was one of the big concerns, aside from the fact that, and I'll let, I know there's some people in the audience who want to speak to this, is that, you know, the units, as you pointed out, are in excess of thirty-five years in age. I don't think that they were, the design for which they are being used doesn't meet the intended purpose. And I think that if we're gonna put any money into this, I think, you know, you can look at it as thirty-five years of deferred maintenance, which would be a couple thousand dollars a year that maybe the city should have looked at, to replace it to a system that actually works and would benefit the community, both the nonprofits and, you know, paid individuals who have, you know, some level of expectation when you go there, that the facilities work in a manner in which they are supposed to and what people reasonably expect. So, I mean, that's really been my issue, is that if we're gonna fix this, let's do it right. And to do it right, then I understand it got further complicated because we don't have, we have gas to the building, but the line that we have is insufficient in size or diameter?
That's correct. The building was built as an all-electric-
Okay, we have three items on consent. The first one was polls, which were the minutes. The second one, approval of the City of Galt Warrens. The third one, the architectural review procedures.
Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hewer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. As for the regular calendar, we're moving J six forward, and that is Mr. Winkler. Item is consideration of options for upgrades to Littleton Community Center stoves. All right, we are working on a PowerPoint. As we're working on that. There we go. Mayor and council members, this item is to provide you with a report on options available for upgrading the Littleton Community Center stoves and to seek council direction on a preferred alternative. Away in background, the current electric stoves are pictured on this slide, and they are believed to be the original stoves that were installed when the Littleton Center was constructed in the late seventies, which would make the units approximately thirty-five years old. During the 2014 budget hearings, concerns were expressed with the condition of the existing stoves, and ultimately nineteen thousand five hundred dollars was approved for the purchase of replacement units. Upon subsequent consultation with the Community Development Department and Consumer Affairs, it was determined that to replace the stoves would trigger a requirement to bring the Littleton Kitchen up to current code standards as a commercial kitchen. Specifically, some of the challenges that we face would be to, we would need to upgrade the fire suppression and ventilation systems for the kitchen, along with related electrical system upgrades to meet current code requirements. As you can see in the photo on this slide, there are no fire suppression nozzles on the hood over the stoves, as you might see in a more modern hood arrangement. And if an option was to be considered for changing out the electric ranges for gas-fired units, we would also need to upgrade both the service to the building and add internal gas piping within the kitchen. Given the significant cost increases associated with either replacement option, staff then proceeded to request a professional assessment of the condition of the existing ranges utilizing commercial appliance service out of Sacramento. After thorough inspection, they have indicated that the units actually are in surprisingly good condition considering their age, and that needed repairs and calibration of the ovens could be accomplished for approximately twelve hundred dollars. It is noted that refurbishment would not improve the appearance or the basic functionality of the stoves, but would correct a door hinge problem that we're aware of, a malfunctioning thermostat that has been affecting some of the operation of one of the stoves, and calibration of all oven controls would be included in that price. So we've sort of boiled down a large variety of options to three basic options for you to consider tonight. First option would be to refurbish the existing electric stoves, which would not trigger any code upgrade requirements of basically maintaining the existing equipment. And this slide does show all three options, the estimated cost to implement those options, and supplemental funding that would be needed for two of the options. As noted, nineteen thousand five hundred is in the current approved budget. Should options two or three be selected, it will be necessary for staff to bring back formal approval of a supplemental funding request for subsequent council consideration. And for the public that can't necessarily see the slides, the three options are to refurbish the existing stoves for twelve hundred dollars, replace the existing stoves with new electric units for a cost of approximately forty-nine thousand dollars, or to replace the existing stoves with new gas-fired units at a cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars. So to assist council in making an informed decision, we also reviewed the kitchen usage. We looked back over the last three years with statistics furnished by the Parks and Recreation Department, and looking primarily at food preparation events at Littleton Center, we came up with the statistics shown on this chart. They basically break down into two categories, paid use and free use, and the free use are shown in the light blue in the second and third columns, and two categories of paid usage in the darker blue in columns four and five. It is noted that city records do not indicate whether private rentals utilize the kitchen for cooking purposes or not. They have use of the kitchen if they choose, but we don't have any record keeping as to whether they actually used it, so that's the fifth column is private use unknown. We don't know if the kitchen was actually used or not, but that's the statistics over the last three years. The takeaway from this chart, to summarize, is that depending on how you count the private party utilization, the Littleton Kitchen is used for cooking on average two to three times per month over the last three years, and a large percentage of these events do not generate any current fee revenue for the city, based on our current fee structure. Which brings us to our recommendation tonight. Based upon current kitchen utilization statistics, in an effort to live within the approved budget, our staff recommendation is to refurbish the existing stoves at a cost of approximately twelve hundred dollars. Should this prove to be, to provide an unsatisfactory outcome, replacement of the stoves could be reconsidered during the future budget approval process at the desire of the council. If council direction tonight, we are seeking council direction on your preferred alternative among the three, or any variation that you'd like to give direction on. And should you proceed with stove replacement, which would be options two or three, we would then bring back a budget adjustment at the next council meeting commensurate with whichever option you select. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Questions for council?
On the vent system or the hood, so there'd be no repairs to that currently on the fire suppression system, excuse me?
The twelve hundred dollars would basically refurbish the stoves, and no code upgrades would be triggered or required at this time. So we would not be proposing any if we refurbished the existing. If we go with either option two or three, code would require the city to upgrade the hood, fire suppression, ventilation, and electrical system.
What type of system is it currently, then?
The hood system?
Yeah.
Well, there is no fresh air intake. It just pulls air out of the rest of the building, so in a future scenario, we'd have to actually put an air intake in the kitchen, and we'd recommend at a minimum a swamp cooler type setup so we're not in the summer pulling in hundred-degree outside air. The hood itself that exists has an archaic fire suppression system up inside the hood, but there is no cutoff. When you hit the fire switches, it doesn't shut the ranges down, which a current system would have to do for either electric or gas.
But on the fire suppression system, is it water, is it gas?
It's basically a water-based solution that is up inside the hood and doesn't even come close to meeting current standards for fire suppression.
And I think that's one of my major concerns, is that we have a system that doesn't meet current standards, and for safety reasons, I think alone, that system should be looked at for replacement purposes. And I think that was one of the big concerns, aside from the fact that, and I'll let, I know there's some people in the audience who want to speak to this, is that, you know, the units, as you pointed out, are in excess of thirty-five years in age. I don't think that they were, the design for which they are being used doesn't meet the intended purpose. And I think that if we're going to put any money into this, I think, you know, you can look at it as thirty-five years of deferred maintenance, which would be a couple thousand dollars a year that maybe the city should have looked at, to replace it to a system that actually works and would benefit the community, both the nonprofits and, you know, paid individuals, who have, you know, some level of expectation when you go there that the facilities work in a manner in which they are supposed to and what people reasonably expect. So I mean, that's really been my issue, is that if we're going to fix this, let's do it right. And to do it right, then I understand it got further complicated because we don't have, we have gas to the building, but the line that we have is insufficient in size or diameter?
That's correct. The building was built as an all-electric building. Then a number of years back, a high-efficiency furnace unit was put in, which is gas-fired, so a one-inch service was brought in. If we were to add a change-out to three gas-fired ranges, we'd be looking to have to upsize that to probably about a two-and-a-half-inch service to the building.
Well, that's kind of my comment at this point. I'll let, you know, other council members or anyone wants to speak.
Oh, I do. What, if we just went with refurbishing the existing electric stove, what would it take to fix the, what are those?
Fire suppression.
The fire suppression system, was that put in any of this?
Yes, if you'll give me just a moment.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was no breakdown on the components?
No, not in your staff report. We kind of summarized to get direction as to your inclination, but I do have a breakdown on how we came up with those costs. Put my fingers on it. Hope I didn't leave it on my desk. Well, it is apparent that I walked out and left it laying on my desk. From memory, I believe that the fire suppression system, which would include electrical upgrades to inner blocks to shut the stove system down, that we were looking at, I don't trust my memory anymore, but I believe we were in about the fifteen thousand dollar range. Then the ventilation, which we would recommend go with that, would probably be about another fifteen hundred dollars. So we're talking about north of twelve, fifteen thousand dollars for fire suppression and related ventilation upgrades.
Okay, my thought is, if you know what my thought is on it, first of all, see if just by refurbishing it, it works. But if it doesn't work, I don't want to wait till the next budget cycle, because that's another six months, correct?
I hesitate only because I'm trying to figure out the definition of how we know it works, okay? The stoves are working now. One of them has a bad thermostat, and one of them has a sticking door. Those would be the primary items repaired with twelve hundred dollars.
Was that the major complaint for the people that weren't using the stoves?
Those are the complaints we've heard. The one that hasn't been mentioned that I think is really a driver is a lack of burner units, such as boiling water, craft feeds, or spaghetti. Right now, all three units are griddle tops, and that doesn't lend itself to much besides griddling. I did have a council member ask me a question, and I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but is it possible to retrofit maybe one of the units with a range-type burner unit? And that's a question we haven't asked. I'm sure that commercial appliance could give us an indication of whether that's possible. I don't believe that would necessarily trigger an upgrade because we're keeping the same basic unit and just doing a stove top replacement, if you want to call it that. Whether parts are available to upgrade a thirty-five-year-old stove, they are telling us parts are still available. Vulcan is a commercial manufacturer of both gas and electric ranges, so they have a pretty good depth of parts. They're a national firm, so that would be an option that we could look into if council was interested in pursuing that option. I'm sure that that could be dealt with in the current budget.
Would that be for electric again?
Because the units are currently electric, it would have to be electric.
So it would have to be electric?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments from council at this time?
Well, if we're going to have a facility that we're renting out, I think it should be something that we can be proud of, and that should be certainly working. And I know that it is a problem that we don't have a burner that you can heat water on. And sometimes when you don't have exactly what you need, people find ways to try to handle the situation that's not always safe, and that's always also a concern of mine, that if we don't fix it, fix it right, that we could have problems down the line with someone, you know, just making something work when it's not safe. And the other thing is, we're renting a facility, and I feel like we owe, we have an obligation to the people that we're renting it to to make it workable.
Excuse me, Steve, was, the estimates here, is that for three stoves total?
Yes, that would be for all three and all three options.
So if you were to reduce, say, in the event, take the gas, you were to only put in two stoves, what would the cost be at that point?
We actually looked into those options. If you put in one new stove, you trigger the code upgrades.
Correct.
And the lion's share, the stoves are actually the least expensive of the component parts. I think electric stoves are actually a little more expensive than gas stoves, but then you trigger the gas service upgrades, which then outweigh the electric costs, is why gas ended up being the most expensive option. So we could downsize the system if we only had two stoves, but we'd still have to do upgrades, so you'd probably only save about five thousand dollars.
I guess what I look at is, you know, from a safety point of view, we're looking at a cost of about seventeen thousand five hundred, just to give the upgrades that we need, at least in my opinion, for fire suppression and ventilation. But that's to accommodate a system that, and a set of stoves that doesn't work, and there's, there'll be testimony by others who have actually used these stoves for the last thirty-plus years, and what the problems are, and based on their, you know, intimate use over that period of time. But I think once you start looking at adding the seventeen thousand dollars to what would be a minimum cost, that I would think that the council would like to see for public safety purposes, and reducing one of the gas stoves by five thousand dollars, you've cut in half what this estimated cost is of forty-one thousand, essentially. I mean, you've offset that cost. So I believe that I think, hopefully council seriously considers at least putting in a couple of gas stoves there and do the fire suppression update. I think that's critically important, and, you know, you echo my sentiments exactly, that, Councilwoman Payne, the public has an expectation. When you rent the facility, you should be able to use it the way it is normally expected to work, and not have to cook your food at home and then bring it in and warm it up, take two hours to boil water, you know?
I've cooked on the stove many times, and even twenty years ago, it was really inadequate. Doesn't, and you get all the smoke in the room because the ventilation system's not good. I mean, it's a real, it's been inadequate for a very long time. Do we have public comments?
We do. I'm waiting for you to finish what you're doing, we'll get right to it. On public comment, Ida DeNeer?
As she's coming up, I'd just like to clarify, Mr. Campion, what I heard you say was, clarify, was you'd be interested in two gas stoves.
I think that, at a minimum, and that's after talking with Ms. DeNeer here, I'll let her, let her talk.
So my clarification would be that you would, you would only save about five thousand dollars doing that?
That's correct.
And you'd trigger the other upgrades, so you'd be looking at about fifty-five thousand dollars versus sixty thousand.
I'm, I guess I'm looking under the fiscal impact based on the prior appropriation. You're showing it, what would have to be appropriated would be forty-one thousand. That was the number I was looking at. Yeah.
I'm Ida DeNeer, a member of the community since I was knee-high. I have cooked on the stoves for probably twenty-five to thirty years. If you go to do a pasta dinner, be prepared to wait two-and-a-half hours for your first pot of water to boil, and then you reuse that water, otherwise you've got to wait another two-and-a-half hours for the second pot to boil. So imagine cooking for three hundred people just a pasta dinner. Then you add something to the oven, and usually there's either one or two ovens that doesn't work when you get there. And so what you end up doing, which is not right, but you end up cooking at home, bringing it in, hoping the health department is not there, and heat it up. So whatever we can do to get rid of those griddles, whether it be electric coils or gas, I don't care, as long as I can boil water within forty-five minutes, I would be happy. So whatever you can do to improve them, I would appreciate. Thank you.
But Ida, you said the ovens don't work either, at least one of them?
Well, half the time you get there and the coils burn out. So you call, this was years ago, I called Chris Smith, and he'd come in and put in a new coil. And then I got where, when I was going to do a dinner, I would come in like two days before and turn the ovens on to make sure all the ovens worked. Now, the last one I did was in April, and I opened the oven door, and I thought, oh my lord. So I called, and he said, well, it just hasn't been cleaned. I said, no, it hasn't been cleaned, but it doesn't work. And the middle oven did not work at all. So we only have two ovens that worked. But anyway, whatever you can do, I would appreciate. I am to the point where I will not cook another dinner. We've got one scheduled for May second, but I am not going to cook it if something is done to boil water. Thank you.
Thanks, Ida. Shirley Turner?
Again, as we're waiting, I believe that that stove that she mentioned is the one with the bad thermostat that would be repaired.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Turner. I might have lived here a gong for a little longer than Ida has.
How about a coffee?
I have used the facility many, many times for catering functions. My husband and I had our fortieth anniversary party there, our fiftieth, my two granddaughters have had their wedding receptions there. I can't say that those are stoves. They're grills. And any of you who have ever tried to cook on a grill for two hundred or three hundred people, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. You have to wait and wait and wait for the grills to get hot, and as Ida said, the ovens, most of the times, the ovens do not work. And I feel that if you want to continue renting that facility to people, local people, outside people, you have to give them a facility with working appliances. The walk-in refrigerator is great, the sinks, there's two different sizes of sinks there. There's some countertop space, it would be nice to have a little more. When they put those, all those in, they put deep fryers for French frying. I don't know that those deep fryers ever were used. I don't think they're there anymore. But it would be very nice for the city if they could decide to upgrade the kitchen, and you might get more people to come and utilize the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you. Okay, do we have any further discussion?
Well, we need to come to some kind of conclusion of all these things.
Well, we need to look at being safe. I mean, right, it's, it's not safe. The ovens aren't adequate. I mean, it's really too bad that there hasn't been stuff done over the years, so, I mean, I know it's a budget consideration, and maybe they can come back, you know, we can come back and look at the budget that I, seems to be the, I mean, I, like I said, I haven't cooked on it for about fifteen years, but even back in the eighties and nineties cooking on it was horrible.
Well, that's what's been the problem, is there's been so much maintenance that hasn't been done for so many years that looks like the house has fallen apart everywhere you go, which is a shame.
Yeah.
So we've got to get, yeah, we should be, it would happen way before anybody here, but we should start being taken care of it. But like Shirley said, which I think is, fix it, more people will come and use it, you know? If they can boil water, I'm looking at the top of this thing, like Kurt said, all you can cook is pancakes or hamburgers on it, so, you know?
I think, and I've talked a little bit with Ida, correct me if I'm wrong, it appears that if we had two new gas stoves with cooktops, and maybe select one, the best of the three, and leave it as a griddle, or even convert that to, or even convert this to, to get rid of all three of them and put in additional counter space. I mean, I don't know, I haven't really worked in the kitchen as much as these people, so I'm not sure exactly what the best configuration is. Talking with people, it appears as though two ovens would probably work, but, you know, I'm open to suggestions of the council or the public.
Do you have a motion?
I would make that in the form of a motion to go with a minimum of two, two new gas stoves, cooktops, upgrade the fire suppression, and look at the possibility of leaving one of, the best of the three, I guess, as an opportunity, so we would have at least one griddle and an oven.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Because if it's only five grand to put the other new one in there with the gas, why keep?
But what we may want to do is maybe have half a griddle on one of the gas stoves. You could have half a griddle.
You know, then you wouldn't be working with gas electric stoves.
Yeah, that's true, too.
It has occurred to me that we expect commercial restaurants to be up to code, and I think the city needs to set the example and not operate, not up to code. I'm not sure which is the better option, but I think we definitely need to do something. We need to have an oven that works consistently, and we need to have a way that you can boil water, and we need to have the safety of the fire suppression.
We do have a motion on the floor, do you want to?
I would amend the motion to three gas stoves, and one of the gas stoves have a griddle top, or a partial griddle top.
Really? I don't think we need a griddle top.
Really?
There's, there's griddles now that you can put on, they're hard, that sink's a hard to clean, they don't, they aren't maintained well.
Three stoves.
They're really, they're really.
You talked me out of it.
Yeah.
No, because you can, you can put a griddle right on top of it.
Sure, you can.
If you're going to do pancakes, bring your own, bring griddles.
So your motion is option three?
Option three.
Do you have a second?
Doctor.
Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hewer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Thanks, Phil. Kitchen gal.
So we'll bring back an item for subsequent consideration to a formal budget adjustment reflecting option three with all burners.
That what I heard?
Correct. All burners.
Okay. Next item is item J one, the strategic plan.
Give me just a moment.
Getting there. Okay, the three-year goal for the City of Galt, under the heading of enhance, maintain infrastructure and facilities. At the October twenty-first, two thousand fourteen City Council meeting, Public Works Director with finalized plans bid and recommended to the City Council for action and award of contract construction of the Fallen Heroes Memorial.
Well, that actually was completed, and that we did recommend that we award that via change order to the landscape contracting, as by now everybody is likely aware that's been to City Hall. The work is nearing completion, weather, despite the weather, and we're, I believe the final items of work are to get some electrical uplighting for the future monument, and to get some papers put in the center square of the new plaza that's being constructed right outside the building, and with the goal of being available and ready for a ceremony on the second anniversary of Officer Tom's End of Watch. This, the current phase the city is doing is just to prepare for the monument and to have the plaza in place, and then independently, Champs has ordered the granite monument, and last I heard they were waiting for that to ship so that they could do the final machinery work and etching of the monument itself. And I do not, I don't have a current update on that, but the city's holding up their end in getting it ready for that.
I think the latest I've heard is it's sitting on a dock in Seattle.
Yeah. So January fifteenth, the ceremony is scheduled out there, so we're planning on having everything ready. The other thing that will be unveiled on the fifteenth are the freeway memorial signs, Officer Kevin Tom memorial highway signs, both northbound and southbound on Ninety-Nine will be unveiled on that same day.
Thank you. Under enhance economic development, number one is, as of January first- Under enhance economic development, number one is as of January 1st of 2015, the City Manager will pursue and promote locating Delta College south of Galt and north of Liberty Road and report the results to the City Council.
Things are going well. The mayor and vice mayor and I actually went to a, an education master plan session with Delta College, was that last week? And we were, there was a bunch of different things. One of the things was to prioritize educational, educational items for the district. One of them was future facilities, and there was an item on there for the North County campus, and so they gave you little dots, blue, red, et cetera, and so we all placed our number one priorities on the North County campus, so we definitely represented Galt well during that meeting. We've had a lot of subsequent discussions with staff from the district, and they're moving forward with valuation of the site, in contact with our Public Works Department, Community Development Department, and doing their kind of engineering evaluations, et cetera. So we're optimistic that things are heading in a very positive direction there. The district is expecting to release an RFP in the near, or RFQ in the near future that would solicit other proposed sites, and they would be able to compare the Liberty Road site to any other alternative proposals they receive. And the goal of the college district is to make a decision by midpoint in 2015.
Okay, thank you. On the same date, the Community Development Director will present to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the City Council, the draft update zoning code.
Great, thank you. So we have finished all three of our ad hoc committee meetings with regard to the code update. The committee has given us direction basically to do a complete overhaul of the zoning ordinance, actually, so much of an overhaul that we're going to be calling it a developed code, because we will also not only be upgrading the ordinance that stands now, but also bringing in existing ordinances from elsewhere into the new code as one development-oriented ordinance. And that will also include our downtown specific plan, upgrading that into more reform-based mini-code within the development code itself. At this point, staff is working on design guidelines for landscaping to replace our very outdated landscape annual, and the, the project consultant is putting together the actual development code document for draft review, as well as the environmental documents for that. And we do anticipate bringing it to the Planning Commission in February, and then if the Planning Commission takes action in February, then we'll go ahead and bring this to council for approval in March and April, and then hopefully see this thing on the books in May.
Thank you. Under improve financial stability, as of January 1st, 2015, the Chief of Police will obtain a long-term use permit, actually, a long-term use agreement with the California Department of Corrections and Reappropriation for improvements to the regional law enforcement training facility.
Good evening, council. We have in fact met with CDCR, and they have provided us now a draft contract which we will be using if in fact it was accepted to do some improvements on the range. We're kind of in the negotiations stage currently with CDCR and city staff, and we're hoping that they will move forward and we'll be ready for January 1st deadline.
Outstanding, thank you. Under attract, develop, and retain quality employees, as of December 1st, 2014, Human Resources Administrator and the City Manager will gather information regarding the succession planning process and present to the management team for discussion and direction.
All right.
Paula, or is that yours?
I think I'm gonna take that one briefly. We've been pulling some information from other cities that have succession planning documents and been working on a draft policy. We should be able to have the draft document done in the near future and be able to have some more dialogue with the rest of the department directors to bring that, bring that to conclusion. So, things are, things are moving forward.
Outstanding. And I believe that's it.
Can I, can I say something about the enhanced cultural and youth activities? Because the chief and Armando and Monica and I and, four of us, what do you have there? Met today, and we're moving forward with the, working on getting an invite for the council. We have some people that are interested in it. And I've already discussed with the city attorney, and I'm going to re-meet with him to get the parameters down of establishing the committee. So we hope by in January, we will have a meeting of possibly about five people interested in being on the initial board.
Awesome. Okay, under City Attorney's Office, item number two, ordinances regarding the use of parks, use of skate parks and camping, and a resolution establishing additional rules and regulations for city parks. Mr. Rudolph.
Evening again, mayor and council members. Presented for adoption tonight are the three separate ordinances relating to regulation of our parks, the use of parks ordinance, the use of skate parks ordinance, and the camping ordinance, and then there's a companion resolution which establishes the specific additional rules and regulations for each of the individual parks within the community. This was initially introduced to the council for discussion back in September. There have been several amendments made in October and November. At the last meeting in November, the ordinances were introduced. There have been no changes since the time of the introduction, so all items are presented for adoption this evening. If any of the council members desire me to review these ordinances in more detail tonight, I'd be happy to do so. Unless there is such a request, I would just conclude my presentation and indicate that if there's consensus on all four action items, you can move them collectively as staff recommendation. If there's a desire to take each item individually, if there's not consensus, we certainly can do that as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if there's a desire, present a more comprehensive staff report.
Council, questions?
No, I think we've.
No, I was just gonna say that.
Right. Yeah, right. Three seconds.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Huer?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
unanimous.
Item number three, amendment of the Galt Youth Committee Ordinance and Bylaws. Mr. Rudolph, back to you.
So there's, again, two items that are presented for adoption this evening. The first is the ordinance amending chapter 2.85 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding the Galt Youth Committee. The predominant changes in that ordinance are, first of all, to change the structure of the committee so that there are five voting member, I'm sorry, 10 voting members, which are the kids, and then the adults and the council representative will become non-voting. The committee will be changed into a commission. And then the other fundamental change was to insert a provision which provides that if there are three absences within a calendar year, that member would automatically be removed from the commission. The bylaws that are presented this evening for adoption are modified to be consistent with this changed ordinance, and then also to provide some enhanced, enhanced responsibilities for various officers of the, of the new commission. So unless there are any questions, both these items are presented for adoption this evening, and again, you can move staff recommendation if you desire to move both items at the same time.
Do I get any questions from council?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
I do have one, one question. So ahead, let's pull it on and I'll ask it afterwards, just relative to the content.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilor Huer?
Aye.
Councilor Campion?
Aye.
Councilor Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
My question is, who's going to be training or providing information on the Brown Act to the students?
Well, what I do is I periodically do visit most of the commissions and committees, and, and then as, as questions come up, I get invited back from time to time. So I certainly would offer that to, to the chair and the committee to do so. What I try to do as we get rotations to, to visit on at least an annual basis to provide that level of information.
And I, I assume during the discussion we had with Matt, it had been explained to them that there are very stringent requirements associated with that, and Barbara, I suspect you were commending, and I mean, these are, these are, this is very serious.
And, and they are aware of it. We had a retreat, and part of the retreat was for them to understand the Brown Act. And in addition to that, we've had the City Manager and the City Attorney also speak on the Brown Act.
And I've attended the retreat.
Exactly.
Last year, I've attended retreats for Brown Act training as well.
So I think we're trying to stay on top of it. Even with our little subcommittee meetings, we're posting them if necessary.
Good. That's all. Outstanding. Finance Department, fiscal year 2015 first quarter update. Inez?
Good evening, mayor, council, and community members. The quarterly financial report is basically to apprise council and the community on the financial condition of the city through the first quarter, and the focus has typically been on the general fund and cultural recreation, but I've also included some items on some of the other funds as well, so I will bring those to your attention. The annualized revenue should equal at least 25% year-to-date collected, that would be the ideal, or larger. The annualized expenditure should be approximately 25% or less. In the general fund, revenues collected year-to-date represent 13% of revenue, of budgeted revenues, which is typical for the first quarter because property taxes, which is a large source for the city, are generally not received until December during the second quarter of the fiscal year. Expenditures within the general fund are higher than the annualized amount, we're actually at 30% of budgeted appropriations. That again is typical, as that amount includes encumbrances and carryforward amounts for items for the entire fiscal year, not just for the first quarter. I will go through some details in the general fund and cultural recreation fund, and then just hit some highlights within the other funds. Property taxes make up approximately 42% of the general fund. Again, we have not received any property taxes as of the first quarter, and we anticipate receipt in December. The other taxes represent 30% of general fund revenues, and the largest component in that section is sales tax, and that comprises approximately 21% of the general fund. It is good news that quarter to quarter, we actually increased sales tax by 12% of the prior quarter. Some of that was one-time adjustments, but it also was an increase on selling sale transactions inclusive of the June opening of Walmart. Licenses and permits, it only represents 3% of the general fund, but building permits related fees are now in that category, and we have seen some increases there primarily due to the permits being issued for single-family dwelling units and McDonald's. Revenues from other agencies, intergovernmental, that's approximately 10% of the general fund, and typically those are from our grant sources, and this is low primarily because only one grant payment has been received. Charges for services is approximately 6% of general fund, and it's high compared to the budget primarily because we have received a rent payment for the regional law enforcement training facility from the ECR. And expenditures, we should have approximately 75% available, but again, we have expended approximately 30%, so we are over on the annualized amount. Within each department, if you look at them on department-by-department basis, the amounts available fluctuate from a low of 46% to a high available of 83%. And I do want to bring to your attention a couple of areas that we found that there were some errors or some mispostings, because if you looked at the reports, you probably could have noticed a negative or something looked a little abnormal, so I do want to cover those items for you. In council, the personnel costs were higher than the annualized amount primarily because we had posted an expenditure that should be posted to the Community Development Department, so we have made a correcting entry after the first quarter. Non-departmental, if you notice, and workers' compensation is over budget, and that's because the premium for our workers' compensation is paid from that account, and as every payroll is processed, it takes the money out of that. So it does look as if it's over budget, but we're totally on track for that line item. I think those are the general areas of the cultural recreation, or on the general fund. In the cultural recreation fund, revenues are at 25% of budgeted. On the expenditure side, we are at 29% of budgeted appropriations with 71% available. Here again, we took a look at all the different departments within there, the amounts available varies within the departments, there's a low of 59% of the aquatics facility, but typically they incur the majority of their expenditures in the summer months, so that is expected, to a high of 90% available for the store program. And we looked at all of the departments, again, aquatics was on, we expected to see that they would be higher. In the Galt Market, though, in the Galt Market Division, the salary for the newly appointed director wasn't correctly reported here, the salary should be appropriately reported under administration, so again, a correcting entry would be there, will be posted, but if you looked at the salary, it would look as if it is over, over budget. In the recreation line item, there was also a recreation community promotion, and it looks as if it's over expenditure as well. There was an error, we posted an entry twice, and that entry was made in November. But other than that, the cultural recreation fund looked good. Within some of the, I wanted to just hit some highlights in the enterprise fund, they looked as if they were a little higher than budget primarily because we have two cycled four months posted in the first quarter. Expenditures are all within budgeted amounts. You will see that one, in the sewer fund, the NPTDS project is over budget, and we are currently evaluating that for accuracy. We believe that carryforward was not fully brought forward into the new year, so we are looking at that one line item, so if you do see that that is over budget, we are looking into that account.
Inez, before you get off that, how much do you think we're off as far as you're looking for accuracy? Is it small amounts?
That one actually was a couple hundred thousand dollars. At the end of the fiscal year, what we asked departments is if they haven't entered into an agreement, because it's a CIP project, we look at the project in totality, and it's a five-year budget. So we asked if, hey, if this amount is still available, do you want us to carry that amount forward? When we looked at the document, the amount was actually reduced. If, say for instance, there were 700,000 available and the request was for 500,000, we think that there might have just been a typographical error in that, so it doesn't really affect our financials right now, but we're checking to see what impact that would have on our financials versus the current budget. If we've already told you we have this much money available, I can't just re-approach it. So we are looking at that and to see what we can do to correct it. With regards to gas tax funds, here again, a lot of those are amounts in the intergovernmental streets are predominantly based on a request for reimbursement based on expenditures incurred, so we are contined on some of those items, either the expenditures have been incurred, but a claim hasn't been submitted, or it has been submitted, but it hasn't been received. So there's a couple of different, different scenarios that could be working under the gas tax and transportation funds. In the measure R, the primary revenue source is the transactions and youth tax, amounts are on track. We actually estimated that it was, the measure R would, sales would track city sales at a budget amount of 71%. For the first quarter, it was actually a little low, 67%. We are still recommending revenues and appropriations for all of the city's funds at this point. We don't have sufficient information to make an adjustment yet, but we hope that that will bounce back a little bit in the next quarter.
Inez?
Yes.
What would you theorize is, why do you have a difference between the two? Because, it's all sales tax, correct?
It is, but in theory, you would think you'd have 50% of city sales under the measure R, right? It's an additional house per set.
Right.
But we recognize that, we actually did a separate analysis, we recognize that measure R, we also receive sales tax from individuals that need purchase a vehicle that is from, in Sacramento or Modesto, but because the location is, is in Galt, we don't get general sales tax, but we will get measure R sales tax. So we can't just say 50% of city sales will, will receive that for measure R, so we kind of did an analysis to say, oh, we're also getting sales tax. If you buy something online, instead of going to Nordstrom's in Sacramento, I would encourage a local resident to possibly go online, because then it goes into the county pool, and we receive money from the county pool. So if you buy on, at the store, the city of Galt receives zero. If you go online and have it delivered to the city of Galt address, then that money goes into the county pool, we get more money. So we want to encourage you to go online. So we estimated that about 71% of city sales would actually end up in measure R. In the first quarter, it was only at about 67, but we expect that to bounce back up because the county pool, consumer goods, those items that are delivered to your home.
I misunderstood, I thought you said county sales was at 71 and, and measure R was at 67. That's why it didn't make sense, that it was low.
Okay. I may have said that.
No, I don't know if I misheard that or not, but, okay, now I understand, thank you.
Okay. Measure R and sales tax, the budget amounts are inclusive of salary related for eight sworn officers, inclusive of one top scrum under physician and field operations and detectives and as well as two dispatchers. detectives, and as well as two dispatchers. And, let's see, public safety, CFD, and cops. We also have one officer that prorated 18% within the general fund and 82% in the public safety cops program. And impact fees, we have seen money collected, we have seen redevelopment, so this is definitely good news. Somebody building activity is inclusive of the single-family dwelling units, as well as McDonald's and the impact fees. If you look at the expenditures, you will see that some of the expenditures are more than 25%, primarily because of debt service payments. We normally pay 100% of principal in September, and one 50% of interest, so we expect that it would be over the annualized amount. We are still working with Department of Finance and Sacramento County on redevelopment agency dissolution, so that is something that we bring to your attention as we continue to work with those agencies. So with that, that concludes my report. I will be happy to address any questions that counsel may have. We expect that the next report, I know that the financial statements will be on the next agenda, we were somewhat behind based on some changes in personnel, but we expect that with the audit, that we're one councilway behind, so we're making progress, and we expect that the next update, the mid-year update, will be on time as well. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Anas.
Thanks, Anas.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, this is informational.
Thank you.
Next item under Human Resources Department. Subjects' approval of the Galt Police Department Civilians Unit Memorandum of Understanding with Revised Salary Schedule. Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce this item, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Esles to provide the details from the report. I just wanted to say a few things about the process, and I wanted to thank C. Rudolph, our city attorney, and Paul Esles, our human resource administrator, for the fine job they did in being our lead negotiators with GPDCA. It's a new unit for the city, made up of dispatchers, basically all the non-s sworn personnel over in PD. I also wanted to commend that group and their leadership for the professionalism and their collaborative approach they took to the negotiation. So we're appreciative of their effort and the efforts of all staff involved, and so I'll have Paul give you some of the details about how we got here.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you, Jason. So really, what I would like to do is just go over a few of the points of the MOU, and then answer any questions if you have them. As Jason mentioned, this is a new group, it consists mainly of our dispatchers, lead dispatcher, our records supervisor, records assistant, and then also our crime prevention coordinator. And so, it was kind of a fun process. We got to know a lot more in detail about what their jobs entail. If negotiations could be fun, but we did enjoy it. But I really wanted to go over a few of the points, mainly that they will, with approval of this MOU, receive a 2% increase, and also, cost of living adjustments effective July 1, 15 and 16. July 1, 2017, similar to the GPSU and unrepresented employees, they will receive the 4% increase to their salary, but they will also be contributing an additional 5% towards their CalPERS employee share. Physical skills will also be available to individuals that speak Spanish. They'd have to go through a testing process, and that would be an incentive of $50 a month, similar, again, to GPSU and the unrepresented. The waiver amounts for employees that do not take the medical will be reduced from 600 to 500 for employee plus family, and 425 to 350 for employees plus one. Beginning July 1, 2015, our dispatchers will be eligible for post-education incentives, which is something, obviously, they've not been able to receive incentive paid for in the past. And we will be increasing their uniform allowance from $200 to $400, so that is another positive for the employees. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, counsel?
No.
Thank you. We've already concluded J. 6, Communications.
Sure, can we get a motion on the MOU, please?
I'm sorry. My bad. See? Me a fight here. Do you have a motion to accept?
I'll move. Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Counselor Huer?
Aye.
Counselor Campion?
Aye.
Counselor Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Okay. Now we can go on to Communications. Do you have any? City Clerk's report?
Just a couple reminders. The Parks and Recreation Commission will meet on December 10th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. The Planning Commission meeting will be held on December 11th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, and that brings us to our next meeting. That's all I have tonight.
Comments pushed out.
Just a reminder for the council, we do have our employee appreciation Christmas lunch this Friday at 11:30, so look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you, sir. Armando?
Just want to remind everybody of the lighting and night event this Saturday. The festivities start at 4 o'clock, and parade starts promptly at 6:30, so I'll make sure a car's waiting for you to take you to your trailer. After the tree lighting, we'll head over there.
Thank you, sir. Comments by counsel? Counselor Campion?
I have no comment.
Counselor Powers?
I do. I want you all three members, since you've been out, come and help me serve December 11th. From 11:30 to 2:00 at the Chabola Center is the annual senior luncheon for all the seniors in town. It's a free event for them, and they have a great time. So I hope to see all of you there. And just wanted to reiterate again what I said. Please remember that there are kids without toys and families without food, so if you can adopt a family, or do a toy for Todd, or do clothes for sleep train, or adopt a kid on the trees wherever you go, just try to remember those are fortunate.
Thank you. Counselor Huer?
Yes, so I'd like to request the council guidelines to be brought back for discussion. I'd actually like to see, in discussing the kitchen facilities at the Littleton Center, if we can look at doing something more than just the stoves. Really, the facilities are pretty inadequate, and I think we need to look at, if we're gonna upgrade the stoves and upgrade the system, maybe it's the time to look at upgrading some of the other facilities. It is a commercial kitchen, and it should look better and be cleaner than it is. I mean, just easier to clean, easier to upkeep. I think that things have changed a lot since it was built in '70.
Would you want, like, staff to come back with a report on other facilities that maybe should be looked at, as well as what you're saying?
Yes.
Same.
Well, yes, the only comment I would have is, if the council wants the budget item, we could have that ready at the next meeting, or if you want to load it together, we'd have to then wait on the budget item to bring it back with a further facility assessment. So we could do it two different ways. One is just to bring the budget item for the stoves back at the next meeting, and then bring another item at a subsequent meeting when we have time to research and figure out exactly what those upgrades would be, or we could delay it until we have time to bring them all back together.
I think we should proceed with the budget appropriation, because there are other things that have to happen. I mean, the gas line, you've got to coordinate with PT&amp;E and get the stoves ordered, I mean, so there's this stuff, and you'd want to have the money to start that.
Yeah, go forward.
Bring back the stoves.
I just think...
What we could do is, as part of the budget process, we could bring that forward as some different options relating to upgrade of that facility, if that's okay.
Great. And when are you gonna, I'm sorry. Steve, are you gonna bring another capital improvement update soon, so we can know some of the things that are already out there in, you know, in the works?
Yes, both. We will typically bring the quarterly CIP update to you. Are you interested in specifically other facility items that are in the budget?
Well, that could be a star, so...
Okay, I mean, we present quarterly where we're at on planned capital improvement projects, if that's your question. So we'll be due back to you here in another month or so.
Okay.
And to clarify, were you, Ms. Huer, interested in additional improvements at Littleton or at other centers?
At Littleton. At Littleton.
Specifically the kitchen, correct?
Yes, the kitchen. I know it has others too, but as if we're gonna upgrade the stoves, maybe we should look at.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Well, to talk a little bit more about the lighting of the night, we are gonna have a choir of 150 people. In addition to, the Bell Choir will be there, Armando, and of course, the City Talks will do their wonderful performance. Do you wanna...
City Talks will be there doing their annual performance. The Church Latter Day Saints Chime Choir will be there, the middle school, McCaffrey Middle School Band and Choir will be performing, and the elementary school combined will be performing.
Well, instead, we have all those people, we had to move Santa out of there. There just wasn't room for Santa. So Santa's gonna be over here in the council chambers, and you can have your picture, or your children's picture, made with Santa. There'll be refreshments both in the Littleton as well as in the community room, and it should be a wonderful event, so everyone come out, enjoy it. And then, on the next day, the Galt Youth Committee, oh, and that's sponsored by Shop Local, need to put that plug in there. And the next day, the Galt Youth Committee is having their annual crafting with Santa, which allows parents to drop off their kids for about half a day and go do shopping, or just take a nap. And the fees are very nominal, I think it's like $3 a child, and maybe $10 for a family. What are you doing, Bonnie? You're making motions. Oh, okay, I was saying the wrong thing.
I was thinking about that nap.
Oh, okay.
Crafting?
Crafting with Santa.
What's that?
It's the next day, which is on Sunday. And it's at the Chabola Center, so, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity to bring your kids and drop them off, and they'll have a lot of fun, and Santa's gonna be working there, too. So he's gonna have a busy weekend. So everybody come out and get the spirit. Thank you.
Actually, I wasn't, can I have that for the floor? The other thing, I just wanted to thank staff, and I wanted to thank Jason and Steve so much for all your assistance in coordinating, and Liz has been fantastic, as always. But I would really like to thank, I'm really excited, I greatly appreciate that. I really should thank my family and all of my supporters, but I am really looking forward to the next four years, and I just wanted to tell all of you thank you.
Okay, awesome, welcome. With that, we'll stay in the journey.